Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
It stopped like five or six times.
Is it the battery? Battery can be low.
No, it's connected to power.
Any chance a cat dealer or a John Deere dealer would be interested in a dump truck and some other stuff?
I think if we put an ad in a couple places, we might be able to recoup a little bit more money for it than $2,500. We're off tape now.
We don't have to sell it out for bid?
We reserve the right to reject.
Yes, I understand that, but we're not obligated to go back, you know, we sort of per your time to make.
To check with Icon and just be sure, just to cover ourselves.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Okay, great. And we've been looking at park benches, which are really astronomical.
I think you could find some inexpensive.
Okay, great. And we've been looking at park benches, which are really astronomical, and we need to decide too if we're, what kind of material we would like these benches to be. Obviously, wood is a heck of a lot cheaper, but a lot more maintenance. And the metal that is all weather and resistant to all kinds are talking $700-$800 a bench. So, based on the plan, it's supposed to be eight picnic tables, I believe, and eight benches. So, we've decided that really four, and four would be plenty at that. And we're also interested in putting a couple of grills down there. So, that would require a couple of garbage pails, you know, that'd be addition. But while we've got the stuff down there, we might as well have the other portion for people to actually have a family picnic there. So, we're getting all those prices together, and hopefully we'll come up to the finalization of what to bring forward to all of you. So, we can go forward. Do you have any suggestions of what you want to see? I know we really would like maintenance free, but is reality going to be there? Or do we source it out and make some picnic tables ourselves and save a lot of money? So, the other thing we were going to look at was the wood, and that'll be coming up next week's meeting, that there is a, that they're making the new decking out of, that's last no matter what, no slivers, no nothing. And then get some volunteers together and make some picnic tables. Did you get any answers on that?
The only problem with that is, that wood, that stuff, pylosac or whatever it's called, I don't know. It starts with a P, but for the seating, it's not gonna work unless you brace it more because of the fact that I found out it is flexible. It doesn't look it, but it's not gonna hold the weight.
Well, we could put more braces under the seats. But anyway, we'll come up with a finalization on all of that. But we have a very active group on that, which is great. And you've already called the executive session, so that's wonderful, and that's all I get.
Hey, are there any questions for Amy?
Amy, on the grills that you're talking about putting in, are you gonna do like they do in a state park?
Yeah, just that little-
Like cemented and-
Yeah, right in. We're talking just two, two or three.
And on the picnic tables, do they make like a fiberglass? Have you checked into like a fiberglass?
They make fiberglass ones as well, yeah.
Expensive.
Yeah, everything's nasty expensive.
Big drawback on other materials other than wood.
Other than wood, yeah.
Even wood isn't that cheap anymore.
Right.
Seems like you could get the materials and have a volunteer day in the downtown.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about. They're talking about some volunteer days too, to do some cleaning up along the river. We also have on the agenda to try and do like a July little festival. I know you guys did one years ago before we were in town. And draw everybody down to the boat launch and have just some picnics. Everybody bring a dish and just, hey, let's realize we've got neighbors.
Well, have you given any consideration to doing like a, I don't wanna say a ribbon cutting per se, but like when it's, when everything is done, and all the tables are in and the grills are in, having like a little-
That's what we're talking about. Yeah, kinda, everybody bring a dish and come down and, yeah, just to kick it off. We were talking about possible little canoe races from, you know, above the, you know, just little fun things to, you know, get people aware that, you know, we've got some things here and we really wanna make a difference, so. Some very active people, and we could use more, so.
Okay, are there any other questions for Amy? If not, we'll proceed. See to the treasurer's report.
Um, oh. The revenue and expense report is being copied for everyone for... We have two purchase orders. One is for rubber gloves in the amount of $85.30, and one for a reciprocating saw for $135.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to ping those purchase reps.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls, nay, ayes have it. Okay, one of those. Are there any other items like before, other than finish the budget? Okay, then I would entertain the motion at this time to pay the warrant.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Ayes have it. I'll cut you off if we get to seven o'clock, Woody, but we'll have the report of the superintendent though.
We've all been copied for the last month's work report. Any questions or concerns of what's been in there? For many of the trustees, feel free to ask. We're currently flushing the water system. We started up in the northern end of the village. We're working out towards Miramar. Hopefully, we'll be finished by Friday. We may have to go a day or two next week. The system is really dirty from the winter and the freezing and thawing of the water pipes. Sweeping will begin April 17th and will continue to at least April 28th. And we're doing all the streets, not just the main streets. We're gonna do the main streets. They're gonna be crack sealed sometime during the week of the 24th to the 28th. I'd also like to have the pickup days, May 1st and 15th, for all the leaves and brush.
What were those dates again, Woody?
First and 15th of the day.
We should probably make an announcement for that in the paper, Juanita, so everyone will know.
I was doing some exploring for the rental of a broom, since our skid steer is in, on borrowed time. I looked at pricing. It was too expensive for the village. In my travels, I was able to find one that we could borrow for two weeks, an angled broom for the skid steer. It's maybe a one-shot deal, so we need to consider upgrading some equipment. We're currently using the Blue Ford tractor at the wastewater plant to move the pallets of bags. We're also gonna be needing that machine for mowing lawns this summer. And I'm looking at replacing the deck that mounts underneath that machine to getting a finished mower which mounts on the three-point hitch, which is easily removed and put back on as needed. With the deck hanging underneath, we're gonna hang it up and tear it. We're gonna break it if we leave it underneath the machine when we're moving bags or stuff. It's just too low. I've received two quotes, one from Bayshards for our equipment for $2,750, and then they'll give us a credit for $885 for taking the attachment off our machine and trading in that mower deck for a price of $1,875. Dragoon's gave me a price of $2,200 straight for a finished mower. And this is also keeping the deck that we currently have for the machine, hadn't forget if we need it. But it was keeping all that equipment with the machine. And it's up to your, the prices just finally came together today, so I'm sorry, didn't put anything in as a purchase request. As I said, the skid steer has some major problems. We're still looking at options for upgrading the equipment, vacuum loader, skid steer. I do have a lot of pricing and trade-in pricing and new pricing, contract pricing. Also like to thank the crew for the good job repairing the two water leaks. One was a major leak, one was a surprise leak up on the bridge road in the town. That first leak was one we were looking for most of the winter. I'm having dirty water problems also on South Street. If the flushing doesn't clear this up, we may have to dig up her service tap, which would entail digging up the intersection of Spruce and South Street as her service tap comes right across into the middle of the intersection.
That's the one, it's 171?
171, 1775. The only thing that I can probably figure is that the taps are on the bottom of the pipe instead of a 10 or 2 o'clock where they're supposed to be. As I said earlier, the county is still waiting for pricing on asphalt. There may be an increase in CHIPS funding this year, but the increase will most likely be eaten up by the increase in the asphalt pricing. We've done some flow tests for the price chopper, then we're continuing to work with the contractor on this. And I'm expecting an update on the engineering study for the water and sewer sometime towards the end of the month. Riverdale Trailer Park also has a boil water order that was just issued today. They have a leak in their system, not ours. It's after our meter. This is down behind the laundry. And I have fielded numerous complaints about feral cats. I myself had 10 to 15 across from my house along with skunks and other sort of four-legged creatures that are not dogs.
There is the feral society that if we make donations to them, they come up here and trap these cats and take them, get them their shots, and do everything that they need. And that was presented last year before the budget, and it's only about $75, do you remember?
I don't remember, but this isn't the only area.
Like a $75 donation, we have a really big issue, especially downtown.
Well, we'll look into the problem and study it. I don't think we're gonna solve anything here tonight, so you can let us know what you know that's out there.
I know that's up on Meadow Lane, that's also on Oak Street.
It's not the first time we've heard this, so we need to look at this.
I think that pretty much covered everything. Any questions?
We're gonna do with that building, that was the answer.
We're gonna mount it up on blocks, 'cause if we keep on moving it back and forth, it's gonna disintegrate. We may end up turning it so it's facing-
The street?
A little bit more to the street, a little bit opposite from the way it is, and put another window in it.
Remind we'll raise down the wastewater treatment plant, have they backed up?
Uh, 97 and 94, which is consistent with spring.
Are there any other questions for Woody?
Well, how did the flow end up up on the border when you pulled out the meter? Are we done?
No, we're doing another complete, uh, I think it's 46-day test.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess it's time that we move into our budget hearing. So, at this time, would entertain any comments on the budget? If there is no discussion on the tentative budget, it would entertain a motion to approve this as the 2006-2007 budget?
Sure. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, oh, trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
The budget is approved as presented? Okay, we receive a correspondence, Juanita?
Well, we have correspondence from the Great Shayside River Memorial, VFW 1418, requesting permission to sell poppies from May 15th to May 20th. Correspondence from Living Water Baptist Church requesting a possible reduction in their building permit charge. Correspondence from Chad Corrigan asking for credit for late fee charges on each January 1st, 2006 water and sewer billing. Correspondence from Teamsters Local 687 requesting recognition as the bargaining unit with the village DPW employees. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding oil-water orders. Correspondence from Marie Nisek requesting a sewer credit and corresponding account information.
Okay, we'll address a couple of those under new business. On our old business, I don't think we have anything new for old business. I thought we had purchased a meter reading machine, Woody. I thought we had put that last year.
We purchased, yeah, a, yes, we did. I'm just waiting for it to arrive.
Does anyone else have any other old business? If not, we'll go to new business. I would entertain a motion to approve, to send Joanne Fabler to a grant program. I'd also like to include another person. We are not sure who from the village would attend, but if you wouldn't mind having somebody else with you. I would entertain a motion to pay for the fee for the class.
So moved.
A second? Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Also, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve for the VFW 1418 to sell poppies and champagne, 15 through 20 of May.
So moved.
A second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. And good luck to the VFW with your poppy sales. We also have a letter requesting a reduction in building permit fee from Living Water Baptist Church. Is there anyone who wishes to take action on this?
Is there an expense to us to give that permit?
The expense is sitting right here. And all of the paperwork, the zoning stuff, all the meetings that we hold for these people.
Well, we don't have a motion, so if we don't have a motion, we really don't need to discuss it. If there being no motion, we will move on to the next item. This is Chad Corrigan asking for relief from a late fee on the water and sewer bill, I believe. Does anyone wish to take action on that? If not, we'll move on to the next item. This is from Marie Nisek. She had a problem with her water bill. Actually, her sewer bill was the one that she was having a problem with. I think there was a, some kind of a leak at her house. She's asking for relief on her sewer bill. I would entertain a motion that we give her $300 relief on her sewer bill because, you know, we didn't get this water. That would be, have her, I'd like to see this, that have put her bills have been in the past. Actually, her water bill was a little higher too, but I think she was only asking for relief on the sewer bill. Let's see.
I think Don was throwing it toward that she couldn't give her credit on the water portion of it.
Because we had used that.
But, but she could give her credit on the sewer portion.
This was not going back out into the sewage, it was just going out to the ground.
Yeah.
It's worth jumping for $14,000, $84,000.
It's in the toilet for months.
Is there a motion to give her some relief on her sewer bill?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All aye, all opposed? The ayes have it. Is there anyone who has any further new business? If not, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have just one question on that. Building permit for the church, you gonna handle that next month? Or, I mean, this guy calls three times a day, I gotta give you an answer.
Well, the board chose not to take any action on that.
So, in other words, what the permit is, that's what they're gonna take. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Okay, there are no discussion? All in favor, going into executive session to discuss, who made the motion, Kim?
Nancy.
What's it to discuss?
Personal motion.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.
Which next meeting?
Before we have our sweep to the flag tonight, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all the people that lost their lives September 11th, 2001.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have a roll call of members.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Trustee Chongley?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Stow quick?
Here.
Trustee Garrett?
Okay, now I entertain a motion to approve minutes of the previous meeting.
Make motion?
A second?
Second. Sorry.
Is there any discussion or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes of the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't have standing, because I wasn't here.
Yeah, I wanna thank Don for getting the newer streamlined minutes, so they're much more readable. Now, a presentation of petitions, communications, notices, and general question period for members of the community. There's no one here. So, we'll proceed with the court, Mike Tatero.
Sent a few letters out this past month or so. Mrs. Weir's was one of them. Had her, she had appearance tickets. She showed up in court, got two weeks of postponement. She has cut some of the grass, some of the brush, but I still think there's a lot more needs to be done around the end of buildings. I don't know what she's gonna do about feeding the animals out there. The judge did talk to her about it, but hasn't come back to court for a final decision on that. I also sent a letter to Wendy Davies on Butternut Street, and Roberta Davies responded back. She told me she's gonna get rid of the two vehicles, and it's been an unusually wet summer, so she hasn't been able to cut the grass. So, she asked for two more weeks, and I went by there today, and she has started. Vehicles are still there, but there's some progress. Last week, we had a fire down by the dry cleaner's property before that, and this is a Claude Rabel who owns this property. And I've been after him since spring. There's some old furniture back there. This stuff was all piled up, and apparently someone set it on fire. The fire department came and put it out. But the greater problem with that is there's some dead animals in that pile. Now, I've been through this in Rouse's point. You can call the sheriff's department, you can call the health department, but nobody will do anything. They all say, come back to the village, and, you know, if the village wants to hire somebody to pick it up, or they wanna pick it up and assess it on their taxes, they can do that. But it's pretty bad out there, and I kinda think that it's a health hazard at the very least, so I want you to know that. The building over here by the bridge, Patterson's Building, I sent him a letter. I believe you all got copies of it. I deemed that an unsafe building because of the roof, I believe, is in collapse. He happened to come to see me on another issue the day we sent the letter out to him. So, I explained to him that I had sent a letter out. He wasn't very happy, but he claims that the pigeons are the result of the holes in his building, that they're just roosting there. And he wouldn't let me in the building to check the roof out, but he did send a letter today. Juanita just gave it to me here. He said that he's hired a contractor, but the guy backed out. At the end of the day, he says that the proposed work should be completed within 60 days. So, it's up to the board, but I would like to see him wait 60 days, see if he fixes this up before we take any legal action. But that's your decision.
What are you gonna do with it, Mike?
Well, he needs to fix that roof so that it's not collapsing. Now, he claims it's not collapsing. He's gotta let me in there, and if I feel that it's collapsing, and he doesn't believe me, we can get the village engineer to look at it with me at the same time or separately. They can give it a opinion to the board as to the state of the building. He declaims it's just a natural bend in the roof. Well, I think it's a little more than that. But at the very least, he needs to fix the holes. I mean, I think the pigeon problem is probably the greater issue here. You gotta get rid of these damn pigeons around here. Main knitting, that big expansion in the industrial park, that was completed today. I did the final inspection. And I guess, well, Greg Fleming called me for Horizon Heights. Apparently, he wants a meeting Wednesday, 3:30 Wednesday. I didn't listen to a whole lot of it, 'cause I've listened to him many, many times. And basically, he wants me to issue a building permit so he can build a house up there. He's, in speaking with him, we've discussed the stormwater issue many, many times on two separate occasions, two months apart. Either meeting, we met up there with his engineers and Dean Lashway and all the people. And he was supposed to put a proposal together, come back to the planning board. This has never materialized. Now, he's calling for another meeting, and he wants to build a house. I don't know that I can not give him a permit to build the house based on the way that, instead of a bond, the village took a mortgage on the property. The only power I have is issuing a CO at the end of the project, if the road isn't done, if the stormwater isn't completed. I kinda think that's after the fact. You know, once the house is built, how are you gonna tell somebody? I mean, you can do it, but it's, I think we need to take a position here that either he comes back to the planning board and abides by the rules and the regulations that they were done when we did this before he builds anything. Other than that, I think that's about all I have. Well, the Living Water Church, I guess they resolved their sewer issues, and they're gonna be looking for a CO here in the next month or so. Pretty much doing this today.
Mickey, which property was it that had the dead animals on it?
That's, uh, it's on this side of Dry Creek, here's the address. All I have is the mailing address here. Well, it's 1195 Route 9 in Village of Shayside. Now, even going back to that, other than the dead animals, we've tried twice to send him registered letters. He has a New York address here, P. Obach, but he lives in Canada. And he doesn't respond to any of his mail that we sent him certified. Reggie doesn't pick it up. So, there is a procedure in the book here where I can post this on his wall, send him certified and first-class mail, and also issue appearance tickets. Once the appearance tickets are issued, if he doesn't show up, they can issue a bench report if they haven't picked up. I mean, I don't know any other way of getting ahold of this guy, and I've talked to the people around there. Apparently, he doesn't wanna be talked to, so.
I would do that last-
Okay, we think I should undergo business on that. Thanks, Mickey. It looks like you've been pretty busy, and we appreciate you.
Well, we're getting caught up on a few things, so I'm trying to clean up here a little bit if we can. I have lots of problems with absentee landlords, old buildings.
I just wanna let you know, and I speak on behalf of the board, that's the direction that we want to go, and we appreciate that. Do you have any questions for Mike to go into court?
Do you have to go to court on these appearance tickets? Do you have to go?
I don't have to. Sometimes I ask the judge, I have to do an information complaint, and that's generally all the information- all the information, all the background on, you know, what the issue is, and then he usually does what he does. I can go, but he's never asked me to go.
I was just wanting to get the conversation to be steered, you know, in terms of the animals and that.
Well, I think that by the time this goes to court, this is going to really, you know, it was pretty bad last week when the fire department was there, so. The junk is one thing, but the other issue, that's something else.
Thanks, Mickey. Mayor's report. We returned down in round one of shared services grant, as we know, and we're going to try applying for round two. Donna has gotten some information from some of the successful applicants, and we want to see if maybe we can improve on our application for this next round. We'll be working with Shared Services to try and do this again. From what I understand, there's a lot more money available the second time around, so hopefully, we'll be successful this time. We are, we have put our name in for sources of funding for upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant and for the water system. We have our names in, we're not bound to do anything here, but we are starting the process because it is a lengthy process. And we just, you don't know what you can get until we get into it, so we're continuing to pursue that. The hydrant flushing will take place the week of September 25th through 29th, and the village pickup days will be October 10th and 23rd. I'm going to be bringing up under new business. We originally moved our November meeting back because we found Veterans Day was in, that was on, we were going to get that Monday off, but now it turns out that it's on the Friday, so we can still meet the 13th. So, we bring that up under new business. Also, we bring up under new business Merwin Rural Services Conference in Potstam. Several people have expressed an interest in going to this. It has several different conferences that apply to just about everybody in municipal government, so we're going to be trying to send some people to that. And just to say that Kimberly LeMay and Celine Pochette have done an Images of America book, 200 photos on Champlain for $20 a copy from Arcadia Publishing. I think, I'm going to get one for sure, and I think we'll bring it up in our new business to get a copy from the village for our archives. Does anybody have any questions on my report? Now, we proceed to Trustee Tremblay's report.
I was approached by Fire Chief Chris Tremblay this past week just to remind the public that there is no burning in the village of any kind, not burn barrels or nice little fireplaces or anything like that. They've had some instances recently where they've been called out, so he just wanted me to remind the public on that. And also, I was approached by a town resident, and I spoke with Woody on this, about water on the road on Locust Street, Perris Mills Road. I took a ride up there tonight, and there is a considerable amount of water over the road. And I know you said that the town is working on that.
Yes.
So, there is a town issue. Okay. That's it.
Thanks. Are there any questions for Ken? Now, we proceed to Trustee Martin's report.
Attended a shared services meeting last Thursday. Topic of discussion was the denied grant that we worked on, and our intentions, looking forward to the, to the next grant application. Some interesting, I think some interesting suggestions were made. Also, trying to get ahold of our representatives at the Department of State to try to get our old grant application returned to us with some notations, I hope, that will help guide us into, that will help guide us in making a better grant presentation at the next round. So far, that has been fallen on deaf ears. Other than that, that's, that's all.
Any questions for Greg? Report to Trustee Southwick?
Just want to say Woody and guys, good job on Spruce Street so far, it's coming along good. You know, it's been a slow process, but a lot more work there than what we thought when we started, so I'm happy, if that means anything. Good job, guys.
Appreciate also the help of the Town of Champlain and the Town of Altal, on that we've not mentioned, correspondence, but it's a, it's a good sign when we can get together with other municipalities to effectively utilize equipment that we, you know, have in the manpower as well. Hopefully, we can return the favor as well.
Thank you. Any questions received? Trustee Garrett's report?
I got lots, sorry. Busy month for Parks and Recreation. We are going to have our little village to-do-da coming up here. I forget what we're calling it. I don't think we've come up with a name yet, we're going to decide it tomorrow, it's just going to be Village Fest or whatever. It's going to be September 30th, Saturday, from 11 to 3. We will be hand-delivering flyers to every resident in the Village of Champlain. Anybody in the town, anybody's welcome to come, but we're going to make sure we hit all of our residents. We're going to start the event off with a bike decorating contest. So, the kids will arrive, and we're going to do a bike parade, and we're going to go down Main Street, up church, down Pine, and back down Main to end up at the park. So, that'll kick us off at 11 o'clock, kind of, you know, get everybody in the family involved with that. Originally, we were going to have kayak races, but the group wants to get it very involved, so there wasn't enough time to plan it to the extent that they want. So, we will be doing that in future years. We will be having the kayak contest on the lake. So, what we're doing is, we're having residents, we'll have that on their invitation, to bring a canoe or kayak for their pleasure, to launch at the boat, launch, and enjoy the river during the festivities. We are waiting to hear on some donors for food. We're going to serve hot dogs, and soda, and chips, and stuff like that, provided we get it all donated. So, it all depends on what people come through with for donations for us, and tomorrow night's our final meeting, and we'll have those answers on that as well. We're going to have different games after we eat. Games for the children to play, they'll be organized. We have a band that's playing, and I forgot the name of the band, and I apologize profusely. These are local kids that are coming, and they're donating their time to have some music at the event, which is really cool. Looking forward to that. And then, we're going to end up the day with storytelling. Some of the local residents who have been around and can tell about the Champlain Village, our history and whatnot, and Celine is going to try and have her museum available for a quick tour at the end as well. And her books will be available for sale at that day. So, it's really very, you know, pro Champlain Village, get the information out there about us and what we're about, and hopefully, we'll get a lot of people there just kind of having some fun. So, that is that event. We are coming on October, so we will have Halloween decorating contest again, outdoor decorating contest, and we will be going around and judging that the week of October 15th through the 20th. So, your house needs to be decorated and lit up in the evening, or whatever you want to do, I'll go both, our group will go during the day and at night, so we can see what it looks like both times. October 15th through the 20th will be the judging. Because we were going to meet, our meeting is the 16th. So, what, you know, actually, I'm going to change that. Let's make it the 13th through the 15th, so I can announce it at the meeting on the 16th, so people can get out there and see it. And we'll also get it posted in the newspaper, so people have time to go around and look at it, because a lot of people like to see who the winners are. So, October 13th through the 15th. So, we'll do 13th through the 15th, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, which is good, because people are usually home for that. So, we'll change that. 13th through 15th. Now, the sum I have for our annual Halloween costume party, which will be our third annual party, is I am not available Halloween weekend. So, if I get help and I get it organized, are any of you available to run it for me that weekend? Otherwise, I have to run it two weeks ahead of Halloween. Putting you on the spot here. Okay.
Do you have a film tonight?
No. So, it's something. So, if we cannot get someone to cover for me, we will hold it Saturday, the 14th. If we can get people to cover it for me, we will hold it on Saturday, the 28th. And I might be able to get someone within our organization, the Beautification Society, whatever you want to call us these days, to cover it for me, as long as I get everything taken care of ahead of time. Okay? So, that's that. There is a Tony Hawk grant available out there right now, to do at the end of September. So, those who are hoping and praying for a skateboard park, cross your fingers, and, you know, hopefully, we'll qualify for that, but Joanne is writing a grant for that as September 18th, you guys had mentioned to me a while ago about Lake Placid, that they're giving that class on funding H2O and sewer projects. Did you still want me to go to that?
Yeah, anybody that would want to attend that, I would recommend it. I went last year, it was very good. It's worthwhile for anybody that would be available to go to that. We're not going to be out of town that week, but I would be attending also.
Monday. I've got it down, so I'll go if, you know, you want me to go. And last, there was one of these flyers in our general mailbox for how to supervise people, and they had two areas that were highlighted, and it was find the delicate balance necessary to effectively supervise friends and former peers. So, I thought that might be interesting. I know you've been to a lot of supervising classes, I don't know if it would be worth the while, but it's $99, and it can never hurt. So, one day seminar, I'm sure you all read it, and I just thought I'd bring it up, because I thought it might be, from the personnel aspect, my job to bring that up. And, let's see, what else? Tony Hawk Grant, decorating contest, and...
If you want to bring that up, then you can bring it up under new business.
Okay, I'll do that. Oh, and also at the festivity thing we're having, I don't know what we're calling it, sorry. We're also going to do face painting. So, if anybody's out there that is really good at it and wants to volunteer to do it, please come along, I'll have the supplies. Otherwise, we'll just nab some older kids and get them to do it. But, we really want the whole community just to come on in and come together and have kind of a fun day, and if you want to make a dish to bring, to add to your lunch, bring it along by all means. If, you know, you want to share with people, some people are kind of hunky about wanting to share food. I thought it was a normal thing, but it seemed kind of leery, so. Anyway, it should be a really fun day, and we're looking at getting a tent, so in case it is raining, at least we're undercover.